I'd like to open the regular planning board meeting for Tuesday, May 16. We are being recorded and broadcast live, I would imagine, on the public service TV. And I guess we're not being audiotaped. So first items are administrative items. Number one, we need to reorganize the board. We need to appoint a chair, a vice chair, and a clerk.
Mr. Chair, are you willing to continue your service?
Yes.
And you know Mr. Daler is not present, whether he is willing to continue to serve as vice chair?
I think that because he's not here, it's a good one to choose.
As vice chair?
I think he would be okay with it.
Pardon my ignorance. Who was our clerk?
Manny.
Manny, is he?
Me?
Manny.
I thought it was Manny.
Is Manny, how many hats?
I would like Mark to step up for that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Can we do this all in one motion?
Sure.
Mr. Chair, I would move that I would nominate James Whiten as chair of the board, Bob Daler as vice chair of the board, and Mark Schmidt as clerk of the board.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Second thing is we need to appoint a member to the infrastructure committee, as well as all the other committees. When do we do that? You know?
What other?
Committees? There's lots of other committees, like John is Climate Resilience Committee.
And Open Space.
And Open Space. There's a lot of different committees. I guess we won't do it tonight.
We want to.
Can you do it for our next meeting?
Okay. Okay, but with the infrastructure committee.
I think there are like seven infrastructure committees, and Bob is on every one of them. But I would nominate Bob Daler to serve as the member on the infrastructure committee.
Well, we have two slots on the infrastructure committee.
Yeah, I'm on there too.
Oh, you are. And so Bob and Manny on the infrastructure committee.
Are you going to be on for the select board?
We got Steve on there, and I think I'd like to keep Steve on there.
There should be two from the select.
Two from, yeah.
So.
Unless somebody else from here wants to get on there. I cannot stay on the select board side then.
Well, is there a reason that Manny can't serve as both the select board and planning board member?
Well, it just takes one extra seat out of, I don't know.
Yeah, but the smaller committees necessarily worse.
That's true. We'll leave it like that, see what happens.
Yeah.
Well, somebody make a motion.
I would move that Bob Daler and Manny Sores serve as members from the planning board on the infrastructure.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District, SERPET, for 2023 to 2024, commission member appointment. I am currently the commissioner from the planning board in Westport.
Are you willing to continue serving?
Yes, I am.
So, did you invent SERPET?
No.
No, really? Because that's the rumor. I would move that Jim Whiten, our chair, who's been on SERPET longer than I can remember, continue to serve as our representative on SERPET.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Open Meeting Law, Trainings and Certifications.
So, last week I circulated some open meeting law trainings with you all, just to, for your reference. And you have the certificate of receipt of open meeting law materials that we're supposed to maintain a copy in the office. If you don't have a copy in your packets, I'll just pass this down and get all your summaries here.
If I sign one for CRC?
You sign one already, and for the planning board, so I need one from Bob Daler. So you're, John, you're all set up, actually. Thank you.
I just put CRC on it. Will that do?
Do we still need to go through the online open meeting law?
I don't think those are required. The certificates are required.
Yeah.
The trainings are, for your reference, I think, you know, there's some good information in there, especially in light of some of the changes about.
And are these annual certifications, or do they last more than one year?
These last for more than one year, that's correct.
Okay.
I just didn't know where there were copies of these in the office, and so I figured we'd take care of it tonight while everyone's getting reappointed.
Can you speak closer to the microphone, so we could hear you?
And that should be good for all my other committees? Or do I have to sign it for your?
If you could actually write Climate Resilience Committee on there as well. Is that better with the mic?
Closer.
Closer? Okay. Sorry about that. That's probably a little too much now.
We're all getting on.
Okay, well, we're finishing that up. Community One Stop for Growth Grant Authorizations.
So, we have two, if you're, Jim, you're familiar with these, and Manny, you're familiar, we just got authorized to apply for, got a support letter for these two grant applications from the Board of Selectmen. But what we're going to do with these grant applications, one is for the Commonwealth Places Grant, the other one is the Small Town, or Rural and Small Town Fund Grant. And we will be applying to both of these programs next month in order to develop a study for roadway, walkway, and placemaking improvements on main roads. So placemaking is looking at things in consultation with the community to potentially develop something like public art, community gardens, things of that nature. There will be a year-long public engagement process associated with this, and it should be kicked off sometime late summer, early fall.
Can you hear him? No. You've got to get closer to the microphone. Okay.
Sorry about that.
You might want to keep it quiet.
All right.
Do you need a motion to authorize the chair to sign this letter?
Yes.
Yeah, so the, it's a letter of support, so I would like for the board to entertain a motion to sign off on that support letter.
So there are two letters?
There's one for the grants, and then there's one for the ARPA request, which is the next item on the agenda.
So I would move that the planning board authorize the chair to send a letter of support for the Rural and Small Town Fund and the Commonwealth Places Grant.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I would move that the planning board authorize the chair to send a letter of support for ARPA funding concerning the main road corridor plan.
Second. I would like to actually amend the letter to include both from the ARPA funds and/or the grant local match fund.
Okay, that's okay with me.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And you can change that or add it in?
Yeah, Ali, we'll forward it to you, just to verify the language, but yeah, we'll add that in.
Okay. Next is a pre-application consultation, file number 23-009 PAC, which is a request by VASRO Realty Trust to discuss the new layout, a new layout, for the subdivision previously known as Francis Estates. I think we have it in the IP.
Hi, Tom Morris with Dean's Consulting Engineers. As you said, this has been previously submitted by another engineering firm. They had done an open space subdivision. I don't remember the number of lots, but it was more than what we're proposing now. What we're doing is moving on to a standard subdivision. Not looking to do the open space anymore. There was a lot more wetland impact with the long driveways and longer wetland, and it just wasn't going to be worth it. So they recently hired us, and we're going to be moving forward with the standard subdivision. There's two main questions that I wanted to ask the board in the pre-application meeting before we get into the design, one of which being related to the previous subdivision that we permitted Stacy Lane off of Fisher Road. We ended up going with a waiver for the stormwater volume control, which reduced the size of the basin considerably, and that was kind of a joint effort on the board and our, we both thought it was mutually beneficial. The basin that was originally proposed was massive, and you need something very big to hold back the volume. And it's not something that's required by the state, it's an additional town regulation. We would still be meeting all the state regulations based on runoff rate going to the wetland, which would be our design point. So I know a waiver can't be granted now, we just, we want to get a feel if we should move forward asking that waiver or not. The second thing being, excuse me, the right-of-way width. It's standard's supposed to be 50 feet, and something in my memory tells me that the board wanted 40 feet for the Stacy Lane subdivision. I'm not sure if that's true, and if we should go with 40 or 50, we can make either work.
So if you're asking me, I can tell you that I think our requirements are 40 feet. That's our regulation in our bylaw.
Okay.
So not 50.
Okay.
So your other question about a variance for stormwater, we would need a lot more detail to be able to tell you whether or not it would be something that we could grant to make it smaller. Our general regulations require that you reduce the amount of runoff from the developed area by 20%. So do you meet that, or are you looking to waive that?
No, we wouldn't be looking for any other waiver, just that volume. And what that is, is, so we would be meeting 80% of the runoff rate, is the regulation you're speaking of, and we'd meet that. The volume leaving the site is just, it's a different characteristics of the runoff. And what it requires you to do to meet that regulation is hold water on the site and infiltrate it far beyond what's required for recharge from the state.
So I think we would need to look at what you're doing. Where's it going? If it isn't going to be infiltrated on site, where's it going? And so I think I'd let others opine, but I think to grant a waiver for it, we have done that, as you know, but we need more information than we have here.
Right. So we should do the definitive design without the waiver, to be able to show you what it would be, and then maybe discuss the waiver at that point. We were just hoping to skip that step if the board was in favor of it and not have to redesign it.
I don't know how we can be in favor of it, because we don't know anything about it. We went through the process on the OSRD, the Open Space Residential thing, but this is a completely different layout, completely different roadway, completely different everything, so.
I can tell you the water in either situation would be discharged to the wetland here, which eventually comes down to the road and crosses Main Road with the culvert over here, I believe. So, and like I said again, the rate of runoff entering that system would still be reduced. We'd still be meeting the 80% of pre-development that you require. So that culvert wouldn't be inundated, because we'd be metering that water out in fashion that it could still handle it.
So you would continue to strive to reduce the rate by 20%?
Yes.
But you don't want to touch the volume? Is that correct?
We probably would be pretty close in the volume, but getting below pre-development volume is typically very difficult and requires a large infiltration basin, which is, in this case, where we're trying to, what the basin would either be here in kind of a peninsula of Upland, and we were also thinking we could fit it in here above the wetland for all this that comes down across the site. So really, just reducing the size of the basin would help with reducing impacts in the wetland water.
So it's been some time since we looked at this, the other open space residential development. There's a pond here, right near where you're talking about, on the plan. Is that a vernal pool, or is that a pond, or what is that?
We have it mapped as a pond, and I think that was just taken from the previous plan. I don't think we've had any wetland scientists. Since we've taken it over, we haven't had a wetland scientist go out and look at things.
So you have submitted three different plans here. Can you explain what they are?
I believe they were just, was it a cover and existing and a lotting sheet?
They all look like the same lotting sheet, but there's three different ones. They all have 10 lots.
I believe they are the same plan. I don't think we submitted more than one. Maybe they just came through three times?
No, I mean, this one is clearly different, where the roadway is clearly delineated in a dark shade. And then this one and this one, I can't perceive the difference without getting into it, but this one and this one, same.
I think that dark color on the road is just a function of being copied.
I don't think so.
No, we only did the one length.
Manny? I took your paper off the blank.
I'm sorry.
It wasn't intended to give multiple concepts.
Basically, you have one plan here, right?
Right.
You know what I think might have happened?
This is a reverse.
Bob Daler did a colored-in one, you got that right?
Yes, yeah, he had marked up a plan, that might be it.
Yes.
And when he scanned it, it makes that darker color.
Yes, so, and Bob did his markup, I tried to scan it in, and it doesn't read on the scanner. So this might have been Bob Daler's markup, but it doesn't show on here.
Yeah, because I think he wrote it in.
Okay.
Yeah, I have it, if anyone cares to see Bob's markup.
Okay. So the reason for changing was, from the OSRD, you know, with this one, you're going to need to do 10 separate nitrogen-limiting subject systems.
Correct.
And you have 10 perks?
That will be something that we do next, before the definitive design. The next step after this meeting, we'll be scheduling perks, getting off there.
Are you going to have the wetlands redil delineated?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I believe, wasn't that?
Oh, '07.
Didn't they do an ORAD, don't they have an ORAD? Didn't they do an ANDR filing for this? We know, it should be a note on the plan, actually.
I think the plan said 2007, from the last delineation. The ORAD was issued in '07.
In '07. If the board, and obviously, we're going to have to file a conservation as well, if it's required, we certainly can, and at a minimum, we would rehang the flags.
Yeah, that's not our, we can't opine about that, but I would suggest that you need to do that before you come in with a definitive plan, so you know where things are.
Yeah, I see.
And we can't make our decision based on what we think the conservation will do, so.
Right.
So I don't know how to answer your question about the volume. And I think that if you could give us some detail of what you're talking about, it doesn't have to be the definitive plan, but you're welcome to come back to another one of these and get our opinion, but we have nothing to look at, so.
Right. It's difficult to give you something to look at without really doing the full design and seeing exactly what the basin needs to be, all the grading around it. So it's fine, if we have to do that, we know that was an option coming into this. We were just hoping that we might be able to skip a step, but.
I don't know about anybody else, but.
I mean, the area that you're looking at opposed to drainage is surrounded all over, yeah, I mean, you think that area is big enough? I mean, it's a good spot for retention, but you think it's going to be big enough for?
It would certainly be big enough if we don't have to do the volume. If we have to do the volume, I think we're going to have to get creative with fitting in multiple basins across the site.
So do you know how much impervious surface you're talking about, Manny?
It is, well, it's the maximum length on the road, 1,200 feet. So, I mean, that's roughly 5,000 square feet of road.
And all the clearing for the houses, are you going to give us clearing areas on here, or just?
Well, yeah, we certainly will in the definitive. This was really meant as a rough concept, to show you guys the layout of what we're proposing, and then just generally discuss things. I know Bob Daler, when he did the markup on the plan, he was saying that there was no design done, and saying, he was kind of drawing drainage boundaries across the site. And that is definitely something we're going to do, it's part of the definitive design. It just wasn't part of what we were doing, we just wanted to keep this very general.
So the volume, you're going to have 10 lots and a road and a lot of cleared area, so the land in total will be asked to handle more runoff than currently is there, because of all the cleared areas.
Correct.
And if we don't limit the volume, I'm not sure, I don't know how you're going to limit the rate, or reduce the rate, without somehow reducing some of the volume, because I think the volume will be greater, obviously, than.
Right, the volume is generally greater for pre- post, when you're not doing large amounts of infiltration. But it's very typical, because any town that doesn't have this volume requirement, the state requirements adjust reducing runoff rate.
Right.
Not the volume. And we always reduce the rate, and the volume ends up being greater. And the way you do that is just having you design the outlet of the basin, the detention basin, to release the water slowly, and you detain the water, you hold it for a time, and it just meters out slowly, so it meets, or obviously, in this case, we'd be reducing by 20% from pre-development.
Right. No, I understand how it works, but, all right. I don't know that we can help you anymore, but if anybody else wants to.
Jim, I have a suggestion. I think one thing you could do, so generally, Bob Daler is going to be our point person for stormwater review, and since he's not here tonight, I think, as a courtesy, we can have you send Amy kind of a rationale of what you're looking to do, why you're requesting the waiver, and what your solutions are in light of not following the regulation. You don't have to get into, you know, in-depth detail, but provide an overview of what you're looking to do, and then we'll have Bob Daler look at it, provide some comments on that. And then, you know, because that's the best we can do right now, with Bob not here.
Understood.
To answer that question.
Okay.
Okay.
We're good to go?
All right, thank you.
Good, thank you. Next would be Bentley Estates 2, file number 15-009C. The applicant has requested to eliminate sidewalks in Phase 2, and I think the further question is, would it be a substantial change to the subdivision approval? So is there anybody here for that?
No, so the applicant actually requested a continuance of this admin item to June 27.
Okay. Okay. So do we have a time for that, or is it just going to be?
It's just an admin item, for now.
Okay. Next is Approval Not Required, A and R, for 408 Sodom Road. Request by the, file number 23-012A, request by the applicant for endorsement of a plan of land showing three lots for land located at 408 Sodom Road, map 68, lot 28 and 28C. Would you speak into the microphone a little louder?
No. I can talk loud.
Okay. Well, no, we need to have it recorded. Valerie? I don't think that microphone is working.
It is? You got it? Okay. All right. Federal Record Unit Nicholas, South Coast Engineering, on behalf of Shirley Solier, the property at 408 Sodom Road. This is the old site of the Ivy Meadows Trucking, that would be the small lot to the north, it's directly across the street from Ivy Meadows Lane. The property is, exists now, it's two multiple lots, the one to the south encompasses all the land to the east, roughly 36 acres, and the piece to the north is about a little over acre and a half, and like I mentioned, it was the site of the Ivy Meadows Trucking. There were tractor trailers there between this concrete and a couple of sheds. And like I mentioned, it was the site of the Ivy Meadows trucking, there were tractor trailers there, petominous concrete, and a couple of sheds. All of that is gone, including the petominous concrete. And to the south, we have an existing house, septic system, garage, and on the north, it's a vacant lot, with the exception of the well, which is servicing the house. So what we're proposing to do is to divide this property into a seven and a half acre lot to the south, which includes the house and the garage, septic system, and leaving the lot to the north, which as it exists now, is a buildable lot with over three hundred feet of frontage and over sixty thousand square feet of area, and also taking a sliver of that lot and adding it to the lot one to the south, the reason for that is because of the existing well. The parcel to the back is labeled as a non-buildable lot, it has no frontage. The plans for that lot, for that land right now are, there aren't plans for it at this point in time. Miss Sylvia does own both parcels, and what she decides to do with that is in the future. The one other thing I would mention on this plan, if you look to the very south of Lot Two, is a neck of land that comes out of Sodom Road. It has forty feet of frontage and two sidelines are parallel. However, that forty feet is not perpendicular with the lines, and that neck of land, for lack of a better term, it's actually less than forty feet wide. So it could not be used as a driveway or a road layout as it exists now, because it's not wide enough. You'd have to secure some land from the abutis to the south, you couldn't do it with the abutis to the north, because their frontage is, as it exists now, is less than a hundred fifty feet. Having said all that, a lot of that area is wet, so I don't think it would be feasible to put a road in there, no matter what, but I just wanted the board to be aware of that. That's something that pretty existed, and I don't think that was their intention, but that's what it is. So that's pretty much what I have for overview, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back to you, and thank you.
Okay, just a couple of questions. All the land to the east, is that in common ownership, or is this, is that separate?
Yes, it's all in common ownership.
To the east?
All the east, yes.
Yep. So that's. Oh, I see.
So the current owner is gonna continue to own that eastern?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's correct. Whether she sells that parcel off to an abuter or somebody else, or an environmental agency around, that is the origin around here of Angel and Brooke. There may be some interest in that. The piece to the front, which is labeled as twenty-eight C, still qualifies as a buildable lot.
Yeah.
So, so basically, you're cutting off parcel A?
Correct.
And parcel A will be, is that part of this A and R? I guess it is, yeah, okay. So, and the parcel to the, the land to the south of parcel A?
It's a different ownership.
Different ownership?
Yeah.
Okay, questions? Planners?
I recommend that the planning board endorse this A and R, because the lots have adequate frontage, uplands, and square footage.
Okay. I agree, I would entertain a motion.
I. I move, Mr. Chair, that we grant the approval not required for four oh eight Sodom Road. Seconded.
Okay, is that adequate motion?
Yep, that's an adequate motion.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you.
We'll have it tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next up would be a little late, the six fifteen public hearing for Westport Horizons Development Corp., Oak Ridge, file number oh six dash oh oh one SP dash major, continued from February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, and December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. So we have a, there's nobody here from Oak Ridge. We have a, a, an email from their attorney that one of you should read into the record.
Sure. Okay. We reviewed the matter concerning, this is from Mark Levin of Levin and Levin. We reviewed the matter concerning Oak Ridge, the last unit was sold from this project was approximately ten years ago. Subsequently, the developer closed the company. Mr. LeBlanc understands that he made a mistake when he did not, when he did the development for Oak Ridge by not having the sidewalks planned as indicated in the plans to the town. Unfortunately, the road layouts as cut that may or may not be reviewed by the town engineers created a problem to add sidewalks, which became apparent to my client when he wanted to close out the project a few years ago. At that time, he instructed his engineer to amend the plans to eliminate sidewalks. My client has spent a couple hundred thousand dollars in an attempt to develop Stone Ridge Independent Living Facility. It appears that this project hinges on whether or not the way known as Mellow's Way is a private way used by the public. Uh, that's not relevant to this one, okay, next paragraph. Part of the Stone Ridge development is also to create walking trails. My client understands that sidewalks on this project would be required, and he would be designing the road system to accommodate them. What he has in mind is that in order to obtain income, to assist in placing a new walking trail system in Oak Ridge at the time he designed the Stone Ridge project, he would connect all of the walking trails for both projects, assuming the Oak Ridge Board would approve of the same. With this in mind, unless my client is able to build the Stone Ridge project, the entity that built Oak Ridge does not exist and has been depleted of all funds many years ago. We will not make a presentation before the board tonight. We understand that the engineer, William Smith, has provided an as-built plan to accept the building, to accept including no sidewalks. I have reached out to Oak Ridge regarding this matter and received one response that was unacceptable to my client. We have not directly heard anything from Oak Ridge since our counterproposal sometime in the beginning of February twenty twenty-three. I understand that the board has received other proposals from Oak Ridge, copies of which were sent last week. My client, my client understands that the planning board was holding five to six thousand dollars of funds for engineers' reviews. He's willing to assign the funds to the board as it sees fit to Oak Ridge Condominiums Trust. Although he is not responsible individually, he is willing to contribute individually, a gift of five thousand dollars towards the planning board or Oak Ridge's needs. In conclusion, it is a hope that Mellow's Way is acceptable to the planning board, which can resolve many issues. Unfortunately, my client has spent over three years, my client has spent the last three years with an absorbent amount of money making perk tests, engineering, surveys, title exams, and legal fees that cannot be recovered.
Okay, so there's several things in that email that are, have nothing to do with Oak Ridge, and that's with Stone Ridge. So in our public hearing on this Oak Ridge, we are going to ignore those, because they're not relevant. The, the issues that the lawyer brings up, some of them, I think, are probably correct. The, the entity that built it is long since dissolved. And we have been talking about this issue in the planning office for months, and we had a long talk today. And I would like to ask Amy to give her thoughts on what we could do as we sit here today with this public hearing, and maybe come to some kind of resolution, so, Amy?
Okay, so, all in all, the applicant is offering to give Oak Ridge the remainder of the money in the consultant review account. Right now, it's six thousand, three hundred forty-six dollars and nineteen cents, but with an eventual as-built that correctly reflects the development, that'll probably be around a thousand dollars less. And the applicant has offered to give additional five thousand, so about ten thousand to ten thousand, three hundred, you're looking at. What I recommend that happens tonight is that the planning board makes an amendment to the special permit for the elimination of the sidewalks. And we don't decide on the as-built plans that he's submitted right now until the amendment is done, and we have our peer consultant go out, do a site visit, and do a review of the as-bills to see if they are correct. What I also would think would be a good idea for this situation is that the planning board accepts the walking paths that was submitted by the residents, and it would be at the responsibility of the residents, though, to fund with whatever money, if you get that ten thousand, three hundred, or at your responsibility to do that walking path and maintain it. But the planning board would ultimately give the okay that that design of what you provided me earlier this month or last month is sufficient. And the third is, I would urge the planning board to agree to give the remainder of the consultant fees that we have to Oak Ridge. And I would urge the planning board tonight to close the public hearing and deliberate on any conditions at all, but so we can close this public hearing and then issue a decision that's an amendment to the special permit.
Okay, so just to recap, you're suggesting that we, in this public hearing, eliminate the sidewalk requirement?
Yes.
And, and that's really because the homeowners do not want the sidewalk, they would like the walking path to be, to be redone or fixed, or whatever. Number one, number two, that you suggest that the planning board accept the drawing from the homeowners of this walking path, which it'll be there. I think, from my perspective, what we should do is approve the walking path as the potential, that if they build it, this is what it will look like. But I think it should be up to them whether they build it or build part of it, or not build it at all. So. I, I think this is really the only resolution that I can see. We could require the builder to make the sidewalks, but the builder's not Bucky LeBlanc. The builder is a company that's, it's no longer existing. So it's impossible for us to, to make that non-existing company perform anything. So I would like to open it to anybody that would like to speak, but I think that's, you get an idea of what we're thinking about.
Mark Allard, I'm from Oak Ridge, I'm currently the Vice President of the Board, and I, I'm here tonight representing all of these folks, as well as our president, who's not able to be here. As you know, we have been deliberating about this for many, many days and many, many hours, as all of you have. We've put all the work in, one person hasn't. That amount of money that's been offered keeps on moving. It went from three thousand, and it went to five thousand, and it went to six thousand, and it went to ten thousand. You saw what we laid out, this issue is not just about sidewalks. There are many other elements of the special permit that he did not address, that remain unaddressed. And to sweep that under the rug is really knowingly or unknowingly kind of enabling him to get away with a tremendous injustice to not only the folks who currently live there, but prior residents who are deceased, talking roughly a hundred people. So it would be no different, and I would do this if they were here, that he walked around with a hundred dollar bill, give everyone a hundred dollar bill, and say, I'm sorry. When we've explained to you, given you prices, where the association has spent well over a hundred thousand dollars, and that's not including all the other individuals here, who's spent money out of their pockets. Also, there are things that were not done according to code. We've had dryer vents going into the garage, we've had vents that just go up into the attic, not through the roof. To sweep this under the rug would really be a total injustice and enabling this someone who is not capable of doing this. Now, we know there were town officials that were involved in this. We also know town officials who allegedly were inspectors came in, chatted, were observed by residents, current residents, where no inspection took place. We also know, going through all the records that we're planning for and the building department, that, two things. There were no indications of who inspected the foundations, which you know have had multiple problems and continue to have problems. So I called Ralph, he inspected them. He had no awareness that one of the walls had collapsed. So I only feel like we should be victimized further. In addition to that, in the records, the planning board indicates that a contractor, it's a gentleman named Greg Beckford, we spoke to him. He said, I'm not a contractor. I guess you could call me a construction supervisor. He was a salesperson for Mahoney's. He walked off the job before the job was completed. There was no contractor in this project for at least the final stages. So it's essentially, you know, the fox, you know, guardian of the hen house. And so this is a huge, huge issue for us, and we totally reject your recommendation. We spent a lot of time and effort by your recommendation to look at an alternative to sidewalks. We called Ross Moran from the Westport Land Conservation. He recommended the person who come in, who put in the handicap accessible walkways, you know, at the Westport land area off of, off of Adams Road. If need be, if it's our only option, we will hold to accountable and put a sidewalk in it. It's not impossible. Would it be destructive in many ways, yes, which is why we utilized your suggestion. And in addition, we are now a community of approximately, age-wise, seventy-four years old, seventy-five. Some people aren't able to negotiate even this steep road in the Woods of God, which is why we had an asphalt person that we're very familiar with, who's done work. You know, look at an access point, which would also then connect them to the walking paths and do a sidewalks. Call that a sidewalk, if you wish. Sidewalks would cost the developer, not just the construction of sidewalks, but all the infrastructure work, approximately fifty thousand dollars. The paving and the sidewalks would be a lot less than that. But again, we've also paid for things that are part of the special permit. He also, these walking paths that I've talked about, were not done according to the special permit. They were supposed to be a handicap accessible crosswalk, not done. So I think it behooves you to really look at everything. And quite frankly, you know, if they were hard, you know, illegal, mumble jumble, you know, fine. you know, fine, I don't, you know, wouldn't expect anything else in the term. That's their job. But we are a very irate community, and we expect support, and we have gotten from you a long way, to continue. I'm here for any questions.
Well, I appreciate your giving us your perspective. I don't know, really, from the legal standpoint, what clout we have with a nonexisting corporation.
Well, we look at that as there is one person who is responsible for this mess, and that's Richard LeBlanc. He deliberately, as you have expressed in the past, avoided doing things that were required by a special permit, not our permit, the previous planning board. It's a seven-page document. I'm sure you're all very familiar with it. And, you know, we haven't even gone through all of that. So he needs to be held accountable for the special permit, some of which was undertaken, you know, through the code report, not all of it, because the person did not go to inside any of the houses and see some of the code violations. You know, this issue about the pull chains, we learned about that from Bill Smith talking about the pre-application from Stone Ridge. He mentioned they would have pull strings just like us. We're listening over Zoom going, "What pull strings?" So consequently, we've gone through the whole neighborhood. Some have them, some don't. Some did contract with a security company, and yes, some didn't. No security company ever, according to the attachment that was given to that February email from Attorney Levin, no security company came around and asked us whether we wanted pull chains. Didn't happen. And unfortunately, the town does show us some responsibility for this. You know, you're inheriting this mess, as all of us have inherited this mess. Richard LeBlanc should not be allowed to walk away from this, you know, with tossing $100 to everybody and saying, "Sorry." I think he can do a lot of work.
I agree that...
It means bringing in Jim Harman. It means bringing in, you know, Ralph Souza. It means bringing in the select board. You know, we can make this a mountain. It's already a mountain in our lives. We can make it a whole mountain range. We don't want to. You know, it does not surprise me that he didn't have the decency to show up tonight. Because the other time, the integrity of look us in the face. He's made lives miserable for a lot of people for a long time, and I wouldn't like to make a clarification. He hasn't been away for 10 years. The last condo sold in July of 2016, that's seven years ago. He's had to be on the property since then to correct issues that also were brought to attention by the call report. You have the list of all the things he did not do according to the special permit. You also have the list of things that we paid for that was his responsibility.
Okay. Thank you. Let me get to the board, see what they...
Mr. Chair, I think that I certainly share, I don't share your frustration because I don't live where you live, you know, but I hear it and I understand it. And I feel your frustration, and were I in your situation, I would be...
Yep. We'll have a recess. We're back in session. This is a continuation of the Westport Planning Board meeting of May 16th. And John Bullard was just about to speak, so he's going to continue.
I hope I don't, I tend to have this impact on people. I apologize. Hope I don't have the impact on anyone else. I was saying that if I were in your place, I would feel as angry as you do. I do sympathize with the situation you are in. I think there are two things that the planning board could do. One, I am comfortable making a motion this evening to adopt the recommendation of the staff of the planning department and resolve the issue in the way that I think, practically speaking, will end up. But I think we could also take some time to see if there is another way. And that would require keeping the public hearing open and asking town council if there is a way that we can require the corporation that no longer exists to comply with the promises made and go after the developer of this project. I mean, individuals form corporations to protect themselves. That's why they do that. And I don't know that there is a way that we can go after this, the developer. You keep saying it's the individual we should go after, and maybe there is a way to do that, but the developer was a corporation. But I'm not a lawyer. That's why the town has a council. But I'm also willing to make a motion to say, to ask the town council, is there a way somehow to have the developer make good on the promises that the developer made? All the ones from the pull chains, all the ones that, you know, in all the times you've been before us, that you have laid out, he failed time after time to deliver. And it affects your safety and everything else. So can we go after him? And I suspect the answer is no. That's why I said, you know, we may be back recommending what the planning staff did, but what it takes is time, keeping the hearing open and seeing what town council said. Who knows? They may say, "Yep, there's a way to do that." So that's what I think, you know, we have that choice of one or the other, and I'm happy to, you know, I'm interested in what the chairman and Manny and Mark have to say about which one's the better way to do it. And I'm also interested in what you all think.
Yeah, well, I was, on that note, I was, I'm interested in, I guess, just in a few minutes, hearing your thoughts on what you've proposed, or how you see your way out of this to your satisfaction. You know, you've mentioned that you were willing to pursue this, take some legal action against the developer, but I'm as sympathetic as Mr. Bullard is to your situation, and I don't know it well enough to understand all the, all of the things that have happened there that have made you upset and impacted your lives negatively. So, you know, there's this recommendation here before us. Mr. Bullard has suggested an alternative, keep the public hearing open, and query the town council as to whether he thinks, he or she thinks that there is another way we can enforce the certain conditions of the special permit. But again, do you have any other thoughts?
I just want to make sure that everybody got the documents that we gave to you.
Um...
Yep, extras?
I...
This is what we used that we sent. This was the basis of our proposal to...
Oh, yeah.
Attorney Levin.
Yep.
And how we came up with $100,000. I think the last one I have is my scribble piece.
There's two here. No?
Richard. And again, we went through the seven-page document, the special permit. We went through the call report. All of this is a result of that. And I know we keep getting hung up on the sidewalks, this is the most obvious omission, but I would think the planning board has a responsibility to hold him accountable for the entire special permit. That just sort of makes common sense to me. And the idea, when we read, you know, it's sort of mixing projects, and I don't want to keep them as separate as possible, but I think it bears mentioning that when we did talk about Stone Ridge, the developer indicated that he had passed on the easement rights from this defunct corporation to him in June 2022. And if he's saying now, "I can't do anything, the corporation doesn't exist," how can then one use it ostensibly for his advantage? I can't wrap my head around that. Otherwise, I don't want to get stuck on that debacle.
Right. I agree with you, Mr. Allard. I don't know how he can transfer the easement from a defunct company to himself. So either it's not defunct, or he feels it's not defunct, that he is in charge. If he's in charge, he should be liable. So the question is, how do we make him liable? So that's what I think that John has suggested, that we continue the hearing and have a sit-down with town council and see what we can do. And I think that's absolutely worthwhile to do, so...
Again, I've been elected to be the spokesperson, but I don't want to, like, sort of, are people in agreement with that?
Yes.
Absolutely. Does anyone not agree to that?
Ready, Ross?
Yeah, no, I feel the same thing. It's definitely worth letting council look at it. You also have some, like, the special permit conditions, and you also have building code conditions and violations and so forth, or whatever that could be. I mean, it might be whoever the, you know, he was the developer, was he the person that pulled the actual building permits? I mean, there might be some personal liability where he can't squeeze out of the corporation and, you know, he's still trying to operate, wants to, you know, at least if we look at council, what is our recourse for him trying to develop the project behind you? You know, we're gonna, we already know what's happened here, how do we move forward? We're already, because of these situations that have kind of, we've come to our attention, we're trying to tighten up things in the, on the planning board's end for our inspections, because, you know, some of these, we got another subdivision, we're just finishing, we're finishing up with the bond money. Fortunately, and we're kind of, we're under the gun because it was so long ago, we just, we were lucky that there was enough, and the contractor came in from, the contractor for the Chapter 90 stuff, the number worked, where we could use that and finish it. Like, this is just, there wasn't enough bond money left there, it was so long ago, and now we're stuck. So some of the things we're trying to do is make sure they post out of the bond, and we got to review it every year, 18 months. So you're supposed to do this in this amount of time. Inflation, I mean, that's what's gonna, you know, it's gonna kill everybody in that.
Mr. Chair, you give what Manny said, can I make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we continue the public hearing and that we seek a meeting with the building department and the town administrator and the town council for the purpose of seeing how we can get compliance with the special permit, the building code, and any other requirements that have not been met in the Oak Ridge development as soon as possible.
Yeah, I second that.
So in order to continue this hearing, we need a specific date and time.
That's gonna depend a little bit on how quickly we can get town council.
No, but we can schedule a meeting. We need to schedule a meeting so that anybody in here or listening online know when the next hearing is.
What do you guess it's gonna take us to get town council?
What's our meetings in June?
June 13th and 27th, but I would, I would suggest July 11th.
I would, too.
July 11th, okay. Continue the, in the motion, it would be continue to July 11th.
At 6:15.
Yeah.
At what?
6:15.
Okay. So you accept the second?
Yeah.
Where's second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On behalf of all of us, sort of, thank you. I'm also not an attorney, nor am I a doctor. I was a clinical social worker. So I'm not saying that I created these reactions, but on the other hand, I, it was sort of apt in a sense that this is how emotional this issue has been for so many people. And I also ran employee assistance programs, so I kind of have a good idea of how organizations work and don't work. So your support means a lot to us, and I guess we'll be here on July 11th.
Okay. So I hope she's okay, and I hope that we can work something out with town council. We got a lot of issues with town council all of a sudden, so we're just adding to the list.
Did you get a copy of that last letter? What was that?
Of the email? Yeah.
Because email.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you all, everyone.
Thank you. Assistant planners report?
[inaudible]
Hopefully, we can sway Steve to go in the right direction. We can work on this.
I know that you need to miss him, but I'm wondering in my own head, I'm 8'4", I've been living there nine years. How he's already cleared all that land that he's done. Isn't there a way that they can pay a price for not doing things right? In other words, when I send my child to school and I say, "Don't act up," oh, yeah, boy, that "act up" in school does not want to be any fine for you to do things now. Is there a fine system with the town?
There is, but we're not the people who can give fines. It'd be the building inspector.
All right. The building inspector.
He's the zoning enforcement officer.
But let's hope the building inspector is aware of everything that he built and its problem, which is only going to continue if he's allowed to do that.
We hope to have a meeting with the building inspector.
Oh, thank you.
With regard to this.
You know, it's very hard as a individual to, but there's an awful lot of bad things going on, really, really. He shouldn't be allowed in great town like Westport to be building these things and causing this to all people. He really shouldn't be allowed to do that.
Okay.
So...
I know that, but, you know, we're in the middle of a meeting, and we're being broadcast live, and we really should...
Hope that...
Hope that we can do something, but we're not going to...
You know, it's very hard on the individual to, but there's an awful lot of bad things going on. Really, really. He shouldn't be allowed in great town like Westport to be building these things and causing this to all people. He really shouldn't be allowed to do that.
Okay.
So.
I know that, but, uh, you know, we're in the middle of a meeting and we're being broadcast live and we really should.
Hope that.
Hope that we can do something, but we're not going to get into that at this moment.
Yeah, I can understand it. I just wanted to give you, I'm just one of all of us.
Yeah.
But it seems to me, you know, people go to jail because they don't think there's consequences for what they do.
That's happens, yes.
You know.
Sometimes it hasn't happened, yes.
He should suffer some consequence for the bad things he did in Oak Ridge to all those people.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For your consideration.
Okay, so my first page of the, of my report, we've already kind of addressed the recommendations for what we've already went over in the meeting tonight. My second page is updates. So for Westport, Stone and Sand, the civil crew was seventy-five percent done with the civil work on site for the roadways, grading and basins. And the asphalt grading survey that the planning board conditioned and the decision should be completed and submitted to the planning office by the end of this month. Um, for Pine Hill Solar, the surety check for one hundred thousand was received last week, so that's been deposited. And that was the last of the four solar farms that we had extended with surety and everything. So we're, we're good on all of them. Relating to the salt marshes and the ownership, I spoke to Jen O'Neill, and I'm waiting for her to get back to me in reference to old maps that she may have. For Stacy Lane, there are, there's quite a bit of activity going on on that project site. As expected, there would be, but, um, there's an issue with the subsurface water tank. It's in the correct placement. However, because of the topography of the site, the suction pipe is not allowing for the fire department to draw water from the cisterns. So I have a meeting on site with our peer consultant, Fairhaven Excavating, and the fire department to go over a timeline of what needs to be done and when it's gonna be done and how it's gonna be done.
So do you understand what the topography has to do with the suction pipe not working?
I believe the suction pipe might be placed too high at the pitch. And it was longer than it should have been to the end of the roadway. But according to the plans, the fire suppression tank is correctly placed. It's just the pipe is longer than it should have been. But it wasn't specified in the actual plans for Stacy Lane that the fire department gave for how long the pipe should be. It should be, I think, seven to twelve feet away from the roadway, and it's about twelve to sixteen feet away from the roadway.
So this is the same developer as?
For Francis Estates, yeah.
The one that presented tonight for Francis Estates. Or they were engineering company, but same engineer too?
Same engineer, same developer. So I took a ride out there today, too. So it's, um, it's just about built out. I mean, the other thing, the other issue, the fire tank not working, I mean, that, that's, that should be a condition.
For building a building.
Before you stop building the fire tanks. There's a lot of wooden structures out there right now with no fire tank. Actual. I mean, the contractor that's out there building the road, very qualified. I don't, I don't see any major problems looking at the work. He's got two, another thing is, because I know he's looking for, to release lots, and he's gonna need, there's two retaining walls that line the entrance coming in that haven't been installed yet. They, they came before the select one, Verizon came before the select one on a telephone pole. I think what, what actually happened out there was they were trying to, so all those poles were upgraded for the solar, so they had all new poles there. And there was a pole on the actual edge of the road that they, it looks like they believed they were gonna tie into that. So the new pole's been installed, it's just not hooked up yet. And that's what they came to us for, but it's way over. Looks like the road could possibly be off a little bit. I think once they pull the old pole out, they'll, they'll be able to fix it. But it does look like the manhole for the electrical is, might be a little tight to the road, and the elevation's gonna be too high. So there might be some things that he can look at. But that contractor out there has that site on GPS. So you can notify him, like, when you're going out there to do an inspection with, with Cole, the, the foreman on the job, which is actually the owner's brother, he has a rover, and they can shoot anything that you need out there that's tied into Zenas plant, so which is a registered land surveyor.
So you can check it?
Yeah.
So to give them a release, it has to come before us?
Hmm.
And we need, uh, Cole to do an inspection before that?
Yep.
So.
Prob, probably if they don't want a big substantial bond, asphalt plant, like, whatever. Like, they say, oh, we want to just leave the bind, you know, we're just gonna do the top. But then we find out, hey, you know, we just left enough money for the top, and a twenty percent contingency in the roads in the wrong place. So it would be a good thing to have that.
Oh, we have to, please, well, you have to have Cole take a look at it. Do we need an asphalt if they're not done?
I, I think you could, you can have a partial asphalt.
You could have an asphalt of where the road is and where the drainage is and all those things.
Well, have them, tell them, hey, why don't you set the bounds, because then we can see it.
Yep.
Says, hey, we're gonna put, we'll put the bounds in later. Get them in there now.
Does anybody double-check where the bounds go?
Yeah, that, that's, so the asphalt to do that. Um, they're supposed to have that bounds in before the final asphalt.
Yeah, but do we check the location of, do we check to be sure that the bounds are placed correctly?
With the asphalt, yes.
How does that check?
Because it's, it's measured when they're doing the actual asphalt. That's actually the control that they go and set up on.
Right, but, but do we have a double-check?
Just would be a consultant review on the plan. But again, those, that's gonna be done by a registered land surveyor from the engineer, so that's kind of our check, it's, you know.
Um, so, yeah.
We don't, we don't need any more of these, so.
One of the other things would be, would be, um, asphalt's on all foundations. Because every house is in, and, and almost completed. And they, um, I, I mean, it's, it's a pretty, pretty impressive houses in there. I mean, you would not expect somebody to be just, you know, I mean, somebody's funding this thing pretty well, because they're a, I mean.
So is the developer building the houses?
Yeah.
Well, when they do that, I think they're normally pretty good, I mean.
Yeah, I, I mean, you gotta be, somebody's got deep pockets to get this.
Yeah, I mean, it takes a lot of money, so. But there's also a lot of push to get the money back by selling the houses, so. Okay.
Yep. So Manny, I don't know if you want to join that meeting on Thursday morning?
I think with Mark there, and I'll be good.
Okay, I just, I, I would, I want to go out on the site and get more clarification and be out there with them, especially with the fire, the fire suppression tank. That's an important item for safety.
Do you know if they, if they ended up, because I know Mark had given the recommendations, like Bristol County knows, um, exactly what he wants. And I don't know, did they end up purchasing that tank from somebody else, or? Because Bristol County, that was one of our other problems with a bunch of developers. They were buying, they were buying, actually buying the tanks from Bristol County and different places, but the tanks were all the same, but then the hookup was a problem. And Mark kind of got this, or might, it might have been with, you know, dude before that, got this setup where this is what we need, and we, this is how we do it. And Bristol County makes it all up, and it seems to work.
Yeah, I'm not sure where they got the tank from. Uh, Precast, something Precast?
Bristol County?
The one up here?
Could, it could be.
Yeah.
Um, for climate resilience, our last meeting was May fourth. Our next meeting is July thirteenth. Um, I registered us for the Serpent Annual Meeting on May twenty-fourth. So I registered Michael, myself, Nadine, you, and Manny to go. So the five of us are going.
Good. Do you want a carpool? Well, you're not going home to the same place. You're not coming back here.
That's right, I'm not coming back here. And either is Michael.
Oh, well.
Um, so that, that is my update that I have on items.
Okay, um. Michael, do you have a report, or is it?
Yeah. Um, so a quick report on the Central Village Corridor Plan. A couple of months, been a month since we've met here on this board. So last month, I met with the Westport Cultural Council. Um, they're pretty interested in this project. They'd like to partner on developing an arts project somewhere. Details to be decided, but could be interesting opportunity to work with them. And Amy and I have had a series of meetings with some business owners in the corridor, um, as well as we've administered surveys, and we've had a seventeen percent response rate. And so for unsolicited surveys, that's pretty good. Um, so happy to see that. And I talked a little bit about the next steps earlier in the, in the meeting. Route six rezoning update. We have a, a, with our consultant from BSC Group, we have developed a more general framework for that rezoning. And, um, we've talked about dealing with some more administrative issues, like land use tables, split lot zoning, um, things like that. And so we'll be developing, uh, those out in, in more detail in our next meeting. The next meeting is still to be decided. Um, municipal vulnerability preparedness grant. We are submitting our application to the MVP grant this week. The grant, um, is going to provide a total of ninety-five thousand dollars to do a couple of different things, reprioritize the vulnerabilities in the plan, do some more public engagement with some harder-to-reach populations who have, haven't historically been involved in this kind of process in the past. And then a seed grant project, the seed grant project will be, what we decide on doing for that will be decided as we go through this process. And update on the housing production plan. The survey period for this is still open, and it will be left open through June. Um, the information for the survey is up here on the board. I can forward it to you all as well, because if you could post it on social media or share with anyone who may be interested. Uh, we need responses because we've only have half of a percent of the town responding so far. Which is, we need more respondents.
It's not exactly a sexy questionnaire, I mean.
How many is half a percent?
Half a percent would be.
I filled it out, you filled it out.
I haven't filled it out yet.
Oh, you have?
No.
His, his vote of endorsement.
Yeah.
The cheer of the planning board.
Let me, uh, let me pull out a calculator real quick.
No, no, that's all right.
It's probably like a hundred people or something.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's a lot of fun. I filled it out, so TV land, it's a lot of fun. It's a great survey, fill it out.
Um, and Serpent worked hard on getting it together. They're, they're, they seem really busy with these things, and so we're, we're appreciative of the work that they do. Um, and speaking of, we already talked about the Serpent Annual Meeting. Let's skip over that. And Route six business survey. Um, I developed a survey that was, um, to survey the Route six business community between Fall River and Route eighty-eight, um, to try to get some of those data points that we didn't have in the last Mass Works grant application. And so, uh, we've had a couple, a couple of bites from it, um, so it could help make a better case that, uh, in light of not having one big development interested in, in, in getting off the ground in that area, we're gonna make the argument that there's a more multifaceted need, um, for the sewer in that area, um, as opposed to just serving that one development. So thinking about preserving affordable housing, we had, had a letter from Affordable Housing Development up there, um, had some folks say that it'll help retain jobs. And there was another person who said that they were interested in redevelopment, but essentially the, the risk right now is, you know, why pull together plans if, uh, you don't really have an expectation of what you're gonna be able to develop?
Right. So you, you have the, uh, the owner of Edgewater. You're interested in the property that used to be Yellow Freight, I think.
Yeah.
Uh, where the school buses are.
Yes.
Are they gonna provide a letter saying that if they get water and sewer, they would, they would provide some housing there?
Mari May is working on getting a, a letter from them. Uh, I don't, I don't know exactly what the contents will be, but he said he's been talking to them, and he's going to try and get a letter of support.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I, I am the one that gave the contact to Mari.
Okay.
Um, so Gary Michaels was the, I guess when he sent you the letter for Edgewater, that was, he was supposed at that time to go in for the Yellow Freight property.
Gotcha.
So there's also another person in, so where Portis Restaurant is, there's a, used to be owned by Living Andrea in the back, like, kind of like one-bedroom or studio.
Previous motel.
Right, in the back there. So the person, that was recently sold for, for a lot of money.
Really?
Yeah.
How big is it?
Um, I guess with, with sewer, the potential, I mean, you got all the other land on the other side. I mean, he's looking, um, to knock that down and put nice units in there instead of, instead of that. You know, they got their whole area with the septic. So Gary from Bristol Pacific knows the, the, the realtor that bought it and is looking to do that. So he's gonna reach out to him and try to get you a letter from him, too.
Great, yeah, he, he stopped in today and said he's working on a couple of different.
And then the one up on the farm that goes into Ford Road.
Mm-hmm.
Um, he, he actually, um, that Rogers Automotive contacted me today on his behalf, and he sent me his number. So he's gonna, he's been trying to get his realtor to do, because he's had some offers from some different things, so he's trying to get some kind of, because that was, he'll, he'll be able to sell that with, with sewer, not, not a problem.
So that's, that's the big twenty-acre lot?
Um, sixty, I think it's sixty-eight acres or something.
Sixty-eight acres. That has fifty feet on Route six?
Yeah, and, uh, it has a couple hundred feet on, maybe four hundred feet on Ford Road. You know, so it would, could be a good thing to loop it in and get it out forged across the Hoopahchoke.
Yeah, I've, I've actually, um, I've, I've talked to that realtor, and I need to follow up with her. Because she, basically, the same kind of data points I was asking for in the surveying, that was what I asked her for.
Yeah.
And that was before I even drafted the survey and sent it out. So I need to follow up with her and see if I can.
I think that would be a key, key anchor for going through that Mass Works.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and if you know anyone else, please feel free to send them my way, and we can have a conversation about it. And, because really, any, any little bit of, you know, trying to make a different case as, as to, uh, trying to make a different case about, you know, it's not just about one project. It's about, there's a need across the entire strip, I think.
Well, you, you have, Westport Tire, he, he owns that little multifamily on the side.
Mm-hmm.
They're getting ready to retire. It's two brothers that are narrative from the thing. They're looking to separate that property, and currently, they need septic now. So we'll know what's gonna happen with that property then.
All right, that's it.
Okay, um. In the interim, we've also met with, uh, a real estate lady down here, Nicole and even Keel, to talk about, uh, basically, um, the science and technology overlay district. Which, what is currently the science and technology overlay district, because she has the exclusive right currently to, to sell that. Or sell most of it that's in one ownership, and.
Because I, I think, well, the owner's daughter's now taking over right now, yeah.
So there's a lot of discussion about that, and she had a lot of information about, uh, the, the residences up, um, off of Sanford Road. And in that general area with all the small lots. And we have a real issue with, uh, not only septic upgrades would be unaffordable to them, but connecting to the sewer with regular vitamins and regular costs for water and sewer would be unaffordable. It's our poorest section of town, and it has, we're tier three.
Um, it's three, too.
It's three, I think.
It's three, yeah.
Uh, which is, um, environmental justice area or social justice area. So we're gonna have to figure out how, how to thread this needle about getting water and sewer up in there, but make it affordable. about getting water and sewer up in there, but make it affordable for the people who really can't.
Did you hear the, the Mass Board Health's response? Did you read that, that the Board Health has posted?
No.
On the, on the nitrogen, and I guess there's, there's a meeting coming up Thursday for the state proposed stuff. So I, I mean, I think we all should read it and, you know, it's exactly what he's saying over there. He's had it posted for a while.
Where?
On, on the Board Health's website.
Okay.
And it, it talks about some of that stuff and what the Board Health's real duties are. And that's, you know, that's kind of one of the things that I've been trying to go over with Matt and this stuff with the septics. And we've got a lot of, we've got a lot of issues too, so.
Talk about PFAS. PFAS regulations are going to change from 20 parts per trillion to four. And Rhode Island, Rhode Island just alerted all the small water companies in Rhode Island that if their readings are over 20, that they must close down today. This stuff. I don't know what people do.
How do you do that?
Are we on the zoning board of appeals notice?
Yes.
Page 65, I think I'm, I'm bad.
Right.
No action, correct?
Correct. Nothing that they approved. The next one?
Minutes.
No, there's another one.
Another one?
There, there were two notices from the Zeta.
But there's no action required by us, right?
Right.
Okay. Planning board minutes have a new look.
Yeah, new look. So I've read the minutes of April 4th. And and they, I, I find them comprehensive and accurate. Like the new look. And move adoption of the April 4th minutes.
Yeah, I found them very comprehensive and I second that.
Okay, is there any other comments, edits? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Want motions on some bills?
Invoices, please.
We have the bill to reimburse for American Planters Association in the amount of $27. So I move approval for that amount.
And I assume that's for Michael?
That was for me. It was to transfer to the Massachusetts chapter.
Okay. I guess we could do both of them.
All right, then I'd also move $400 for attending the APA National Planning Conference.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that somewhere local or is it?
It was online.
Online?
Yeah, they, they do a, a virtual one and an in-person one.
Okay, short, long-term planning discussions? I think we've already had them, but.
Mr. Chair, I think our next meeting is June 13th and.
No, May 30th.
May 30th, oh, sorry, May 30th.
Is it May 30th?
I believe so. There, there is one item under short and long-term planning discussions.
Okay.
And that's just 2023 Annual Town Meeting. Thanks, Jim, for presenting. I don't know what happened with the slides, but they went somewhere.
Steve Forbes lost them, so.
But just so you all know, the, I forwarded the annual, or the, the zoning amendments to the clerk's office as amended. There's one very small amendment at town meeting and so that needs to now get sent to the attorney general's office. After that gets sent to the attorney general's office, there's either, either they'll reach out and approve it or they take effect 90 days after it gets sent.
Good.
So I think it's excellent planning to, for both the zoning and all of the Community Preservation Act to appear at the end of the meeting. Because no discussion, all got passed in like two minutes. Really good planning, Mr. Chair. Don't want to be at the beginning of a meeting.
Well, it's not our option. It's always, it's always at the end.
Yeah, well, it's good. You want to be at the back end and not the front end.
Right, well, I think you put everybody to sleep on the front end.
Deep into the night.
Deep into the night.
That's where you want it.
That's where you want it.
So there were a lot of questions about, I can't remember, solar agrivoltage.
So.
And I had some, I, we had some nice, we had some nice pictures if we could have shown. Would have explained a lot, so.
So. In the words of Arlo Guthrie, "I looked at the eight by 10 color glossy and I looked at the seeing eye dog and I knew I was not going to get justice." Allison's Restaurant.
Okay. Matters not reasonably anticipated? I hear none. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.